All right, this is a hybrid meeting of the city council. Members of the public can view this meeting live on Channel 8, the city's website and YouTube. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three and use code one zero four zero nine one star.
Se ofrecen servicios de interpretación en español para esta reunión del Consejo Municipal por teléfono. Marque el número siete veinte tres ocho seis nueve cero dos tres y utilice el código uno cero cuatro cero nueve uno estrella.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. This time I'm going to call the special meeting to order. Ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Hughesman.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Allen Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Madera. Councilmember Miller Chacon.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Present.
Councilmember Hurst. Councilmember Kim.
Here.
Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Douglas. Mayor Hughesman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody wish to leave before we... All right, looking for a motion and a second to excuse those members not present. Mayor Pro Tem?
So moved.
Councilmember Kim?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse the members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to have a public hearing. Tonight's public hearing will be on amended service plan and IGA for the Triangle Metropolitan District. I will remind council of the following: Use the public hearing only to ask questions and gather facts but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. Council members are not permitted to provide testimony if you wish to participate in the decision. You should rely only on facts developed in this hearing and in the record and apply those facts to the criteria in the Land Development Code. Council Policy 22, we're just going to ignore that one. This time I will open the public hearing. Actually, before I do so, Mr. Hayder, did you want to talk to us?
Thank you, sure. Is there anybody on the city council who is unable to review this matter and make a decision based on the record before them and the testimony that is developed at this hearing? Seeing no objections, I'll just... I'm sorry. Seeing no hands, I'm a little off this evening. My apologies. The council can go ahead and proceed. There's no one has indicated an inability to decide this matter in a fair and impartial way. I give the chair back to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. This time I'll open the public hearing. Invite John Borjali, management analyst, to provide the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Mr. Gibson, can we have the presentation from this laptop set up on the big screen, please? I'll try to keep it brief tonight. I know we have a lot on our agenda for the evening. Very quickly, an overview of metropolitan districts and council's action that it may take this evening before we dive into a quick review of the proposed amendment to the service plan. A metropolitan district is a quasi-governmental entity formed under Title 32 Colorado revised statutes. It grants the district the authority to levy taxes in a given area as well as carry out other powers. This is primarily used for the construction of infrastructure by developers as it allows for cheaper issued debt that is guaranteed by future property tax revenue. City council action is needed to approve amendments. Council this evening may approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove of the amended and restated service plan. If council were to disapprove of the amended and restated service plan, nothing else would change. The district would continue to exist pursuant to its existing service plan. City council must disapprove of a service plan unless satisfactory evidence is presented showing that it meets the following criteria. Moving now into the specifics of this case, this is the area in question, the Triangle Logistics Center Metropolitan District bounded by the south by Forty-Eighth Avenue, by the west by Forest Street, and to the northeast by the railroad. The Triangle Logistics Center Metro District Service Plan was initially approved on September thirteenth of 2021 by council. This is a commercial district with no residential development within it. It's a development over an old landfill that requires construction of an environmental remediation system to make the site safe for use. The district is seeking to enter into an agreement with the Urban Renewal Authority in order to finance this project. More detail will be presented later this evening at the URA meeting. The main thing that the amendment seeks to do is increase the debt limit. This is due to a new financing agreement with the URA. The additional debt that the district will be able to issue will pay for the landfill remediation, which was originally not financed through the metropolitan district. This was due to the initial assumptions given in the applicant's financial plan. However, this is changed due to the agreement between or pending agreement between the metropolitan district and the URA. This would pledge a certain percentage of tax increment, which would increase the metro district's revenue stream and would allow for the financing of this additional debt. There's more information available on this in Exhibit E of the service plan, which is the revised financial plan for this agreement that includes that pledged revenue. Debt issued by metro district is substantially cheaper than privately issued debt. That's why the applicant is seeking to go this route, going through private bond markets. It would be very difficult to finance the full cost of this project. You can see below what the initial project cost was. The increase is not due to changes in the project itself but into what is being financed by the metro district. Initially, the bulk of the landfill remediation system was not financed through the metropolitan district, and that has changed, and that is why the cost has increased. The increase in the debt limit is based on the district's bond capacity on the revised financial plan that assumes the tax increment pledge from the Urban Renewal Authority. Staff has reviewed this proposed amendment. The proposed amendment does appear to contain all the information required by CRS 32-1-202 and supports the determination that the requirements are met based on the applicant's submission. In other words, this meets the baseline criteria that is set out by state law. Council has the prerogative to use any other criteria it deems fit when reviewing an amendment to a service plan and approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the plan on that basis. Staff is available to answer any questions about the basic facts of the case as well as staff's review process, and the applicant is also available to answer more specific questions about the metropolitan district itself.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation. This time, does anybody on council have any questions? Councilmember Noble?
What is the cost, if any, to the city by agreeing to this?
Ma'am, there is no additional cost to the city itself. The metropolitan district exists as a separate entity from the city. There will be a finance agreement between the metropolitan district and the Urban Renewal Authority. That is a matter you will hear later this evening, but with the city itself, there is no cost.
Okay, so there would be no loss to the city, at least at this end of the deal?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Councilmember Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to the increase, my question is, what is... What is that addition... What is the additional funding going to be used for? Can you... Because I don't think I quite understood or saw that within the actual presentation.
So, the additional funding, and there's more specific detail on what's financed in the service plan itself. Exhibits D and E show the financial plan and the proposed improvements. What that will be used for is for the landfill remediation system itself, which is as part of this project. This is constructed on a hundred-year-old landfill, so there has to be site remediation. So initially, the district was just going to pay for water and sewer, streets, landscaping, et cetera. By increasing the debt limit of the district, it will be able to pay for the landfill remediation system as well.
So just so I understand this correctly, that was not... When the loan was took out previously, that was not associated as far as... It wasn't on there before, correct?
That was not...
And now they're having to... There's a need to pull additional... How much extra did I see on there? Several million?
Yes, sir. So that initially, the applicant was planning on funding the landfill remediation improvements through a separate mechanism, not through the metropolitan district. Due to the changing conditions and due to the agreement pending with the URA, it is now feasible to fund this through the metropolitan district pending approval of this amendment, which would allow for the same improvements that were already planned, just to be financed differently.
And you said the idea as far as the quote, or whatever the case may be, to actually get it done, it's within the packet as well? Is that right?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me exactly where that was at again?
That would be within the amended and restated service plan. If you look at the exhibits, Exhibit D should have the total costs of public improvements that are proposed. Exhibit E also contains the financial plan showing the bond capacity of the district and its... The proposed debt it would take on and how it would be discharged.
That's all I've got for now. Thank you.
All right, you'll have to help me out here because when I pull this item up in Granicus looking, I get no attachments to be able to pull any of that up. Going back a couple slides, it said that the ability to increase the debt right here will increase debt limit due to new financing agreement with the URA. Is that URA agreement been passed?
It has not, sir. That's what is pending, the URA, this evening. This is the first step in approving this. If this amendment were not approved, then the district would not have the ability to actually issue the debt that would be backed by that revenue pledge.
All right, I'm struggling at this point because I feel like I'm only looking at half a picture. And I really... You're asking us to vote on allowing them to increase their debt limit without knowing whether or not the URA is going to authorize a different refinancing agreement, and I don't see up here on any of these things what that financing agreement looks like. So when Councilmember Noble asks, is there any cost to the city to do this, does it mean that the URA is not going to kick as much money back to the city? Does it mean... The money's got to come from somewhere. Yes, Mr. Aiken, please come explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a way to explain it that might make sense to everyone here tonight is that when the developer initially contacted the city back in 2021, they went into the financing agreement, the creation of a metro district, with the assumption that the URA would be able to secure 100% of the increment from all the taxing entities, and then the URA would assign 100% of those revenues back to the developer. As the city and URA staff negotiated with the other taxing entities, we only secured about 79% of the increment. And then as we, as the URA, were negotiating with the developer the last six months, we were directed to negotiate a fair deal in which the taxing entities and the URA would secure several millions of dollars. URA, about $12 million, is the deal that you'll consider later tonight. So as a result, the developer had originally intended back in 2021 and 2022 that the URA financing would be able to do the remediation, the underground methane system, and other improvements. But when they found out that the URA was going to keep some of those funds and all the other taxing entities were going to keep those funds, there was a shortfall that they're looking to make up with the metro district. So in the agreement tonight for the metro district, there is no cost to the city for these. The bonds have not been issued yet. If approved, then the metro district would go and secure funding, so there is no funding or loans at this time. They're just increasing their debt limitations to do that work that they thought the URA would be able to finance. And then when you consider the URA's agreement later tonight, it will be incredibly similar, if not almost identical, to the agreement that you heard back in December with those five revenue streams coming in, that the URA did not want to assign to the developer and the taxing entities did not want to assign all theirs, if that makes sense.
I think it does. Can I paraphrase all that by saying the URA is not giving as much money to the developers, so therefore they need more metro district debt?
That is correct. So they'll have to find a way to get money out of their own pockets rather than the city or the URA or the other taxing entities giving them all.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Any other councils... Or any other questions from council? All right. Seeing none, do we have any written comments?
Mayor, no written comments were received, but we did have one member of the public registered to speak on this matter, Mr. Steve Douglas.
All right. Is Mr. Douglas present?
He is. Steve, you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes once you begin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My question is on the bonding. I would, especially since you guys doing amendments, I would ask that for this bond is being proposed in the metropolitan district that has any property within its boundaries that is zoned or valued for assessment as commercial prohibits a local government from approving a service plan that permits the purchase of debt, of district debt by any entity with respects to which any director of the district has a conflict of interest. So basically, anybody who sits on that, on that metro district or has an interest in the value or the property being built or, you know, these bonds, they are prohibited on purchasing those bonds themselves because that's a big issue. The fact that this property is going to be built out, the assessed value is going to be higher, and by buying those bonds yourself, you will be able to pretty much double dip, increase your amount of money you put down. So that's my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Appreciate you speaking with us this evening. Is the applicant here ready to answer a question?
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for having us. Did you want to ask a question or should I just...
I do.
Okay.
I do. I believe last time whenever we were approving this metro district, it was stated that you guys, as the developer, will retain ownership of this property, and you guys, as the developer owning the property, will also be responsible for all taxes, taxes levied on this property?
That is correct.
And you're not intending to sell this property to other users? It's going to stay under your control, so therefore any bonds that are issued, you have the responsibility of paying back through the metro district?
It's probably a more complex answer than that, and I do have a team of experts to help with that, but you know, we're developing the park to go into an institutional investment fund, but with the flexibility to sell off a lot or two to a user to be part of the park, all sort of governed by the metropolitan district.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'd also like to mention for the record that councilmembers Hurst and Madera have joined us this evening for the meeting. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-014. Councilmember Hurst?
So moved.
Have a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-014. Is there a second? Councilmember Madera?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-014. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Noble?
Is there any issue doing this when we have a moratorium on metro districts right now?
No, ma'am. That moratorium only applies to residential... To the... To new applications for residential districts. This is both an amendment and for a commercial district.
Okay. And I would like to make an amendment that their board meetings are held within five miles of the property, which is an amendment that we had passed some time ago for our metro district regulations. Our draft metro district regulations, just in keeping with the spirit of things.
May the applicant respond?
Was that a motion?
Yes, for an amendment.
Have a motion to amend Resolution 2023-014 to place into the service plan a requirement that all meetings take place within five miles of the property. Is there a second?
Aye, sir.
Councilmember Chacon?
Second.
Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend Resolution 2023-014 to require that all meetings be... Take place within five miles of the property. Prior to opening discussion, I have a question of clarification. Is this already a requirement in the service plan or does the service plan need to be amended to include this?
It's 20 miles.
Hi, Dalton Kelly with Butler Snow. We represent the city as outside counsel on metro district matters from time to time. Yeah, the... As Councilmember Noble noted, the requirement for any physical meeting is what's required by the statute, which is 20 miles. That is, if it is solely a physical meeting with no virtual participation. The plan also authorizes virtual participation in accordance with the statute. So anything that is physical only would be 20 miles. Councilmember Noble's amendment would be to move that to five.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that answer. All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment to require all meetings be within five miles of the property. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion will carry unanimously, seven to zero, two excused absences. We'll now move on to... Is there any other discussion on Resolution 2023-014? All right, have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-014 as amended. Will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 2023-14, a resolution approving the amended and restated Triangle Metropolitan District Service Plan, including Exhibit C thereto, an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement between and among the City of Commerce City and the Triangle Metropolitan District.
Thanks, sir. Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-014 as amended. The title has been read. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's going to carry unanimously, seven to zero, two excused absences. All right, this time I'm looking for a motion and a second to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses four, subparentheses B and E, for the purpose of receiving legal advice and determining positions that may be subject to negotiation, specifically addressing the litigation against the city initiated by Oakwood Homes, currently pending in the Adams County District Court. Formal action by the city council following the executive session is anticipated and will occur in open session. Mayor Pro Tem?
So moved.
Councilmember Kim?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is going to pass six to one with one excused absence.
You. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, city council is going to go into executive session. We will return. It's estimated to last approximately 30 minutes. We'll take action whenever we get back. Have a couple more agenda items to do before we get out of our special meeting and go into a study session. See you in a little bit.
We are ready when you are, Mayor.
Thank you. City Council is out of executive session. This time, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-014. a second to adopt resolution 2023-016. Councilmember Dara.
So moved.
Councilmember Hurst, I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-016. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kim?
Like to recuse myself as I was not around during that time period if this is appropriate timing to do so.
Thank you, Councilmember Kim. Councilmember Chacon.
Same. I need to recuse myself. I wasn't there at the time.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other discussion? Saying none. Will the clerk please read the title?
Resolution 2023-16, a resolution of the City of Commerce City attesting to the certification of the record regarding ongoing litigation with Oakwood Homes.
Thanks, sir. Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-016. The clerk has read the title. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is going to carry unanimously five to zero, two abstentions, and two excused absences. All right. This time, I'm going to recess the city council special meeting of the city council, call the study session to order. Tonight's presentation for the historic preservation ordinance is unable to attend, therefore, this item will be rescheduled for February 27th. Next up, we're going to have a briefing on the state of the court. I'll invite Judge Brian Bowen, Municipal Judge Ford, to give the presentation.
Good evening.
Evening.
Well, the state of the court is strong, and we are doing well. A summary of our past year, our 7,714 tickets received, 3,356 traffic, and frankly, it seems like it would be much higher, but that's just how the court feels. Customer served 2,665 at the counter, 6,679 by phone, 12,279 by email. And so, our e-contact with our community is really working quite well. We have the court calendar for you and the court statistics report as well. There we go. Court trials, seven trials held in 2022. Those were trials to the court, not jury trials. There were none in 2022. That's kind of a hangover, poor choice of words, but it's a lag because of COVID. And really, the city has an election that they can make whether defendant is going to be eligible for a jury trial. And frequently, that election is made to not include a jail sentence. We are very frequently able to come up with alternative means of interacting with defendants to modify behavior so they don't find themselves, and we find ourselves with the need to incarcerate others. So that's part of where that is. Events on October 5th and October 19th, we did a fresh start day. That was the opportunity for members of the community who had outstanding warrants with the court to come in, get back on track, not be arrested, reset their cases, in some cases, pay their fines or a portion of their fines so we can close those cases. And we're not in this perpetual sense of trying to recover funds from very old cases that, at a five-year timeframe, get dismissed. They're vacated. So comparatively, to other programs such as this that have occurred on the front range, our turnout was, it was modest, but it was comparable with entire Larimer County, entire Weld County. So it was comparable. It's something that I think we'll look into for the future because it's a great opportunity for people to reengage in the process, get their case taken care of, and we're not chasing around after them, issuing warrants, putting them in and out of jail. It's really a good idea, and so I think we'll do it again. We learned a lot. We had members of the community come into the foyer, social services, a veterans' representative, people from the city, code enforcement, so they could engage with people and maybe give them additional resources that they may need to be successful and not be engaged with the court. We are anticipated, we will handle that again. So indigent defense counsel, so there is legislation, and it's moving again through the legislature approving and continuing it, to pay for counsel for people that are in custody. So at their first in-custody arrangement, there is a Colorado program that helps to assist in compensating those lawyers who appear with those defendants. And we find that that's a great use of resources because when the defendant is first in custody, that's when they are really likely to want to resolve their case and move on. And so, we're able to make some pretty meaningful headway on their case. It's not true for every case, but I think it's a very good use of funds. And the state has a program which helps compensate the city for the use of those attorneys. And then, we also have conflict-free counsel. Those are those that we may have someone who knows one of the parties involved in a case that's before the court. We're continue to engage with the North Metro Youth Diversion Program. I will say that that's something we're looking at for the city. Not that we would not be engaged with the North Metro Youth Diversion Program, but that we find that intensive engagement with juveniles, we get better outcomes. We engage the parent, we engage the juvenile, we have them work with resources. And so, that's something we may be looking at in the future, perhaps near future. We've engaged the Center for Innovation, had a meeting with them about what we might be looking at as far as additional staff or reallocating staff so that the work we're doing is meaningful, it's done well, and we may be able to work on these cases to get better outcomes for everyone involved. So, the Adams County Detention Facility, video appearances began during COVID. We could do them by hardline, hardwire before that, before my time with the court. But now, we can use Zoom, and they have an awareness of all the cities, of our availability and time. And so, we're able to interact with those defendants that are in custody without having officer time of booking the person out of the jail, transporting them here to the court, resolving the case if possible, driving them back to the detention facility. It really saves a lot of time, and I'm pleased that the detention facility has continued to do it. Not every jurisdiction has continued to offer that, but those that have, we do cases with people in Arapahoe County, Clear Creek County, all over the state that are still engaged in using it. And I think it's a great resource for the court. Members of our community have other things to do than taking a day off work to ride a bus or get a ride to come out to the courthouse. They can get online, they can work with us, get their case taken care of. They don't have to get daycare, they don't have to take a full day off work. It really is a great opportunity. We do have a lobbyist through the Colorado Municipal Judges Association that monitors and keeps track of legislation that's moving forward and forward and may affect our courts throughout the year. I have been fortunate enough to be to, two of the judicial conferences for municipal court judges. It's a great opportunity to have those invaluable side conversations with another judge. Are you seeing this? Have you ever tried that? What might work? Or whatever you do, don't do this. That's very valuable to know. And so, have received a lot of good information from that. The Colorado, or City Municipal League, sorry, board approved legislating, creating a task force to study allowing municipal courts to share data. One of the challenges that we have is many of the cities, as they have evolved over time, have began using a variety of data collecting tools. And so, what we might do here in Commerce City, we might be able to share it with Brighton, but we might not be able to share it with Thornton unless you draw the data down and provide it in another form. So, there's some, and I've been at this a long time. So, 22 years on the state court bench. I was an associate municipal judge here before, prosecutor before that. And I'm finally glad to see that there may be some legislation to try and make the ability to share information valuable. Because for many years, the best source of information I had as a judge was the defendant. I'd be Monday out in Northland, and then on Thursday, I'd see him in front of me again, and I'd say, hey, what's going on? And they generally, to their credit, are generally pretty candid about the whole thing. But information sharing is very important. It's my understanding, too, the state may be altering their system or updating to a new system, and that's a prime opportunity for everybody to get on the same page. Effective April 1st, 2022, there is new legislation requiring a bond hearing within 48 hours of an arrest for county and district courts. And for municipal courts, it's a requirement if the defendant is only being held on that municipal charge. So, if they have state charges and municipal charges, it doesn't apply to them. But if it does, they're required to be seen. Since we're a part-time court, part of the opportunity is for us, when we're able to engage, is see those cases in a more rapid time because the jail or detention facilities are advising us who is in custody and what they're being held on. And then, also, there's a fallback, an immediate, if they're only being held on our municipal charge, and we're not able to coordinate an appearance virtually or otherwise, thank you, then they are authorized to pay our bond automatically. And then, partial grant funding for court text message notification system. And I'll have to tell you, I'm really in favor of anything that helps people remember to come to court or take care of their case electronically. And so, this is a great opportunity for that. And there's state funding to help us with it. We have engaged with the Center on Innovation. They're looking at ticketing, electronic case processing, virtual hearing option. Some courts have opted to move away from those. I am a strong advocate that we should have been doing it 15 years ago. We see we have the ability to do it, and we need to provide those to the people in our community who are engaged with the court. Utilization of conducting other court business electronically, and increased convenience for parties, reduction of the failure to appear rate, in-person and remote staff scheduling. While the building was open four days a week, and our court was engaged two days a week, generally, we've been able to work with our staff and retain staff because their scheduling has been much more flexible about physical presence and remote participation. And the continuity of staff has been a tremendous asset to us in the court. And Ms. Kuzniewski's leadership guidance shepherding us is incredibly powerful, and I believe you know that. And I'm just here to tell you, she does a great job. Questions?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that update and all the work that you've done. Councilmember Kim has a question for you.
Hey, Judge. Thank you so much for your presentation altogether. You had mentioned during your presentation as well that you were talking about something similar to a North Metro Youth Diversion Program happening here within the city. Do you have any ideas as far as when you might be or what it would look like, what the feel of it would be?
Well, our municipal prosecutor through the city attorney's office does a great job engaging and training. And he and I have had a conversation, a series of conversations about what we might do better. You know, there are challenges about getting people to other remote locations to get engagement and opportunity to modify behavior. And we believe perhaps if we had more of an opportunity to monitor that in-house, not so much to replace a program as much as to monitor what's happening, it would benefit everybody involved. For instance, if we ask a young person or a shoplifter to take a petty theft class or a Live at 25 driving class, and we had a person who is dedicated to, all our people are dedicated, but if we had a person dedicated to monitor when that was completed, we might be able to save that person an additional court appearance. And while, to some extent, we're able to do that, I think that would help us move ahead with that. And that's something we're gauging the Center for Innovation about, what that might look like and how it might work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noble?
Thank you, Judge. Judge, what was your greatest challenge this year, and what was your greatest success?
I think my greatest success, I always like to open with a positive, was being able to work with such a talented and committed team of professionals in a court. I've worked in other courts in other circumstances where that wasn't always the case. And when you can count on what you're promoting or asking to occur, to occur, or for an intelligent and informed question to come back about why that's happening, that is powerful. And so, that, to me, has been very successful. Perhaps our biggest challenge has been the variability in the number of cases we get. And we may see that some of that's going to be changing because we'll have a new police chief on an ongoing basis. Didn't mean anything by that. And they have been hiring additional officers. We now have the Ranger program on, and code enforcement. Those are all sources of information that may come into our court. As I indicated, too, the city prosecutor and the city attorney's office does a lot of training with the police department and the Rangers and code enforcement about complete reports, timely filing of reports. So they don't go out on the street, issue a summons that doesn't get filed in time, it gets dismissed. They either have to re-serve it or give up on it. There's a lot of training going on with that. That'll help us even out what we expect we'll have for the court.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Are there any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you again, sir, for being here. Thanks for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Hader, is it possible for you to get the city council policy updates done in 24 minutes?
I'm sorry. What was that, sir?
Is it possible for you to get the city council policy updates done in 24 minutes?
Sure.
All right, let's go.
All right. Please make sure that you can hear me. If you can't hear me, if I need to speak up, let me know. I'm suffering from a cold, so I'm a little bit congested. I'm also having a little bit a hard time hearing because of that congestion in my head. So, please bear with me. There's two policy issues with regard to council policies that are on the agenda this evening for you. One relates to electronic meetings. One relates to electronic meetings, and the other relates to really council's conduct in policing yourselves. I think what I'd like to start is with the electronic meetings policy. As you are all aware, during COVID, we instituted several ordinances and resolutions to set standards by which we could conduct our meetings electronically. This has continued to this day. The governor has routinely and monthly extended the emergency orders by which our resolutions rely upon to have the authority to conduct electronic meetings. As you know, our code typically requires that our meetings happen in person. The trend around the country, especially during this last year, has been to establish permanent policies and make changes to codes and resolutions to allow electronic meetings to continue in the absence of a public health emergency. In other words, you know, the rules have become much more liberal to allow that to happen in our sister cities and communities around Colorado as well as around the country. But that requires two things for us to do if we want to adopt that. That requires policy change, and then it requires a change to the municipal code. So the first policy change I have for you this evening is an effort and a step to do just that, for you to consider an opportunity to make these changes. So in your packet, the first document on this topic you will see tonight is the electronic meeting policy. So this is a draft policy that goes through the basis. If you're unable to access that, please let me know. But so it kind of gives the background, talks about, you know, during COVID-19, you know, we learned the value of electronic participation and the ability to do these meetings electronically. And it basically says that you recognize the need to adopt a policy that sets standards and procedures for continuing in that electronic meeting process. And then we have in that document some definitions, because this is going to apply to board members, you know, so boards and commissions will be operated, continue to operate in this manner as well. And then we've basically set forth a policy that in many ways mirrors what we've been doing over the last two and a half years. It allows everybody to participate and to appear electronically. That includes council members, board members, the city manager, the clerk, the city attorney, city staff, applicants, consultants, you know, people that work for staff or work with us that might be making a presentation to you. Now, I know that the city manager's focus is still to have people, you know, present in the meeting, but that allows it if somebody is traveling, who's a staff member that might be traveling, they're still able to join the meeting even if they're remote. The Part C on this policy talks about what, talks about a quorum, and basically says, you know, if you're electronic, if you're appearing electronically, that's good enough, that still counts towards a quorum. So we want to make sure that's in there so that we can make sure our meetings move forward. And then, of course, you know, we always had a concern with the interference and participation. So we want to make sure that the city, the mayor can use discretion to make sure if we can't hear somebody, we can kind of boot them. I'm starting to think I need to spend more time on the other one. If you guys have reviewed this and have any questions or concerns, let me know. I feel like this policy on electronic meetings is something that I think we can bring back before you at a regular meeting to be adopted and incorporated into the policies. This really sets forth everything we've been trying to do over the years to try to dial things in. Included in the packet is a draft ordinance. Now, this would make a couple of changes to the code. You know, right now, we have regular meetings and study sessions are dictated at Section 2.200, 2-2001 of the municipal code. And this basically makes some changes to allow for meetings to occur electronically as well as in-person. So this is the code change. The policy happens first, and then the code change gets incorporated. It also makes some changes to allow for emergency meetings with this electronic component in mind. So that would be the effect, the long-term effect, is to make sure we have that ordinance in place as well. That's what really changes the code. And then we have a third document in front of you, and that's a resolution for conducting public hearings. One of the issues that we've always had is with quasi-judicial hearings, where you are asked to decide facts and apply the law or, and see whether somebody has met their legal requirements. One of the things you do is, when you're assessing a witness, is you're looking at their demeanor and making a decision about their credibility and truthfulness. That's always difficult to do in an electronic meeting when someone is appearing via video. So that being said, you know, there is that risk, that downside to trying to assess somebody and make a determination about their credibility. This resolution, however, is here to basically give the procedures there. We have had a longstanding procedure where persons who are doing electronic meetings or who are going to appear electronically in a quasi-judicial matter had to sign a waiver, waiving, you know, any sort of challenge because of the fact that it was happening electronically. This incorporates that and keeps that going. And also, you know, sets the applicant agreement part that you see in Section 3 on Page 2 of And again, this, you know, allows for the ongoing electronic participation of yourselves or people sitting on that board or committee. Again, we talk about materials and testimony, so we still have advanced submission or registration for these meetings so that people can appear, people can hear what's going on, people can participate. You know, and again, it just solidifies and codifies in many ways the things that we've been doing, I believe successfully for a couple of years. But if there's things that you want to change or things that hasn't been working, we can always go back and look at those issues, and I can come back with revisions. Again, you know, if there's technical problems, you know, we can prevent someone from appearing electronically, you know, so we're really just trying to button this up and make this a permanent means to move forward. Are there any questions on this? All right. So then with that in mind, if it's okay, we'll put this on a regular meeting to come back with the policy change and the ordinance change, that'd be for you at some point soon. I'll work with the clerk's office and then the city manager's office to put that on the agenda if that's all right. With that in mind, let's move on to standards of conduct. There are three, again, three documents in front of you with relation to standards of conduct. I do not have the finalized draft policy, but what I perceive is going to be very, very close to this in some ways. We have a standard of conduct outline, we have a council complaints policy, and we have a complaint process. What I would envision is a council complaints policy that gets more formalized into the actual policy of the city council with regard to how you're going to handle complaints, mediations, and investigations, really of yourselves and of each other. This is really focused on holding yourselves accountable. You are your brother's keeper, so to speak. So that's what this is about, and this is something that's been pending or been worked on and talked about for quite some time, long before I moved into interim position. If we were to look briefly at the standards of conduct document, what this document goes through is a basic list of the different areas in our code or charter or policies that might constitute a violation of standards of conduct. So, you know, it starts out with the misuse of confidential information, gets into charter or code violations, direct official action when you have a conflict of interest, and it just pretty much lists the different things that are called out in the code or charter. I would anticipate this would basically be a living, if you will, exhibit to the policy that basically says, you know, as currently stands or is maybe amended from time to time. And it's really there just to put everybody on notice of what potential violations are to make sure that you're aware of those things, and it's spelled out. So, you know, it's in one area. It's difficult to go through the charter and say, okay, where are all the different ways I could get in trouble? This is a much more concise way to kind of identify that for you. We also have a complaint process. So one of the concerns here is we don't want to have, we don't want to have council members making frivolous complaints about each other. You don't want to have a frivolous complaint made about you, just like you don't, you don't want, you don't want to be the subject of that, you don't want to initiate that. So there's requirements with regard to not only what has to happen when you file a complaint, but what the significance of that complaint will be. So, and I actually think the better way is to start with the council complaints policy. So we have, the application basically says, for purpose of the policy, you know, mandatory policies require a council member to take a certain action, and a prohibitory policy prohibits councilmen from taking a certain action. So when you have to do something, if you're prohibited from doing something, those are the areas where we are concerned with potential discipline or potential just enforcement and awareness. So as suggested here, our complaints address those kinds of issues, and it requires a verified complaint. In other words, someone has, is basically saying, yeah, they're putting their name on it, and they're saying that this is the truth, this is what they witnessed, or this is what they're aware of. And to meet those requirements of the policy, basically, a complaint has to be verified, it has to include the plaintiff's name and contact information, has to identify the individual alleged to have violated the policy, and, you know, the other thing it has to do is it has to provide some specific factual detail to identify a policy that is at issue and the conduct that was alleged to occur that was in violation of that policy. In other words, it can't just be some general complaint about somebody or general, you know, undocumented allegation. We're trying to give some rigor to this process or to this, you know, examination. And that's what the next section says. You know, there's, I think there's in there about, I guess, at three little, at 3.5, "Claims and suspicions unsupported by sufficient factual allegations shall be insufficient to meet the requirements." So they will not be acted on. And these have to be ripe claims. So claims have to be filed or allegations basically brought within a month of learning of the facts. There's a potential mediation process when a violation of a policy occurs. There's also a process outlined for investigation and for a finding of a violation and then associated penalties. You know, and the penalties, I think, are one of the things that we've never really had documented anywhere in our policies. And here we do get a little bit more meat on the bones. We're basically saying that there's different means that you can take to penalize someone. That can take anything from an official admonition, a reprimand, you can mandate training or censure to one of your colleagues depending on the severity of their conduct. This could also could include termination of an appointment to a subcommittee or a board or an external body. And that the, actually, the most extreme end of potential discipline you could impose on each other would be an invitation to resign from city council. You do not have the authority to remove somebody from city council, that's not how our charter is written. But it seems like the most strongest thing you could do is actually invite somebody to resign from their position. And of course, any combination of potential penalties could occur. There is some discussion of having a deduction of, you know, basically a fine by deduction of your stipend from COSS or from the small amount of, what's the word, remuneration you get on a monthly basis. You know very well that that's not a significant amount of money, but it may be something to impact someone's position, I guess, so to speak. And then the final document before you is the one titled Complaint Process. And really, I think the thing that we, I want to point out here is, you know, it talks about involving a magistrate. It talks about, basically, this is the way that we are providing due process. So if you were to be accused of something, you get to be heard, you know, you get to have a say in what's happening, you're not going to be teamed up on. This is trying to ensure a fair process by somebody who's neutral, somebody outside and away from this, by having a neutral magistrate, a lawyer of some sort, who would perform this function, so that it's not some sort of, you know, partisan attack or a majority against the minority type thing. The one thing I really want to point out here is that even though we'll have a hearing, and we do have a potential for sanctions, starting on Page 2. And again, getting into sanctions, this is something that would be, if you had a violation, which in 4E says, basically, if you have a violation, be found by a two-thirds vote of those present. In other words, it's, you know, six of nine or six of eight in order to find a violation of a council policy or of a policy here. But the sanction, if you do find the policy, only requires a majority vote. And then this, as contemplated, sanctions depend in many ways on the severity of the crime, so to speak, the severity of violation, but also on someone's willfulness or their intent or knowledge of doing it, as well as the impact that it has. So this asks you to consider whether something was intentional, or whether it was an oversight, or whether it was caused by negligence, or if this is repeated behavior. And then also to consider the impact. Is there a financial impact? Is there a cost? Is there a cost to the city? Does, is this an impact on the image of city council or on city staff? Does this impact constituents? Is there actual harm or damages? Is this something that's criminal? And of course, if it's criminal, it'd be referred to the district attorney's office as well. But also, are there mitigating factors? Is somebody apologetic? Is somebody, you know, was something accidental? But also aggravating factors, you know? Was this, you know, someone being obstructive or something of that nature, or something intentional? And then the discipline imposed here is really intended to fit the severity violation. It's not necessarily, it's not supposed to be a stepped basis necessarily. You know, a more severe crime should, or more severe violation should incorporate a more severe punishment, if you will. But on a stepped basis, the way this is written is you have a verbal admonition, a written reprimand that would appear within the minutes of a meeting. You could mandate training, which may include cultural responsiveness and trauma sensitivity to cultural impacts. A censure would be the next step, which of course happens by a resolution of city council. A board or committee assignment could be modified, including removed, followed by a fine, and eventually an invitation to resign from city council. So again, this process, as it appears on this document, would also be incorporated into the policy to make sure there's clarity as to what one would expect if we were to go down this road. And again, that's also to provide due process. Any questions?
Anybody on council have any questions? Don't see any, sir.
Well, with that one in mind, I know there are, you know, members on the dais who are part of the Policy and Governance Committee. I don't know if there's anything that they wanted to add or report out from those meetings in support of this, but if there aren't any questions, you know, then I'd like to go ahead and finalize that policy and bring this back to council as well for, in a better form for final review and consideration. Of course, this doesn't require an ordinance, this is just a policy to be adopted. Any questions or any other comments?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate all the time that you've done on that.
Did I go too fast? Are we okay on time?
Five minutes. All right. All right, we're going to take a break, and we will convene the URA meeting at exactly 7:00 PM. and we will convene the URA meeting at exactly 7:00 PM. So moved.
Commissioner Kim.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
No requests for discussion. Do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. How many of you are here, and how many of you are not excused? At this time, looking for a motion and a second to excuse the members not present. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Kim?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to modify the agenda of the URA meeting to postpone the strategic planning of the URA to a later date. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're gonna move on to Resolution URA.
If I may, sir?
Yes.
We just realized here that while Member Hearst and Member Madera were away, we actually did not have a quorum. We have, we need a majority, and we had six of 12 present. So with those members out of the room, we didn't have a quorum to start. So I think we need to, now that we have two that just rejoined the dais, restart this meeting, and redo the things that we've already done. So I would suggest we try this again, starting with a attendance.
Will the clerk please redo the roll call for the Urban Renewal Authority meeting?
Chair Hughesman.
Present.
Vice Chair Allen Thomas.
Present.
Commissioner Madera.
Present.
Commissioner Miller Chacon.
Present.
Commissioner Noble.
Present.
Commissioner Hearst.
Present.
Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Ford. Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Tedesco.
Here.
Commissioner Mashuga. Commissioner Lovato.
Here.
Chair Hughesman, you have a quorum now.
Thank you. At this time, looking for a motion and a second to excuse the members not present. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Madera.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse the members not present. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now looking for a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Kim?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to excuse, or to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. As stated earlier, because all the members of the URA are not here, staff has requested that we push the strategic planning of the URA to a later date. Looking for a motion and a second to amend the agenda to continue that item to a date to be determined. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Kim?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to amend the agenda of the URA meeting to push the strategic planning of the URA to a later date to be determined. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna move on to Resolution URA 2023-01, Finance and Redevelopment Agreement of Sand Creek Business Area. At this time, do any board members have any questions for staff regarding the resolution? Councilmember Noble?
Okay, just to be clear, the Sand Creek is the same as, it's another name for, what?
Yes, ma'am.
Triangle.
That's correct. So Sand Creek is the name of the landfill, and it's in the Sand Creek Business Area. The developer's name through the metro district is the Triangle Logistics Center.
Okay, so we had spent a tremendous amount of time on TIFs for this project over the past year. And meetings with the school board, Adams 14, and so forth. What does this mean for everyone who thought that someday they would be receiving money from this project?
Absolutely. So the way that this project was negotiated is that approximately 79% of the increment generated will flow to the development to pay for development costs, and the balance of it, so about the 31, or the 21%, will go back to the taxing entities. So what that means is that the URA is scheduled to get the first $200,000 as a reimbursement for the URA's cost to get to date to develop the plan and negotiate. On an annual basis, the 1% of all the property tax and sales tax will split the sales tax 50/50. There's the residual TIF, which is basically monies that come in that exceed expenses on an annual date, and what we're calling a participating interest, which means that if the property sells, whether it's a partial sale or wholesale, that the URA is scheduled to benefit from that as well. That total deal is worth roughly $11 million. The city will collect $2 million in use tax in the first three years. City's expected to collect just over $1 million in 2K taxes for sales taxes. The city's going to receive roughly $4 million in off-site improvements to existing roadways in the city limits, as well as about $60,000 in property taxes, so a total incentive deal of about $6 million. Adams County, in property taxes, it will generate about $500,000 in increment. Adams 14 will collect about $3.3 million in increment over a 24-year period. The Fire District is anticipated to collect just over $2.5 million over the 24-year period. And South Adams Water and Sanitation is at about $90,000 over that period. There's the Library District and the Flood District, which have much smaller numbers. Those were the taxing entities that had the most to gain from this development.
So, our vote will not affect the, oh, sorry. Our vote won't affect the amount that was, that these groups would have been receiving before?
That's correct.
It'll remain the same.
So without the TIF, and the development doesn't occur, then nothing changes, and they all stand to collect, you know, a couple hundred dollars a year for the foreseeable future. So that's just the increment that will be created if the development is built.
So simply put, as you stated, ma'am, yes. The agreements that were entered into at the time that the urban renewal plan was approved remain the same, and remain unchanged.
And Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Quander, please.
Caitlin Quander, our special counsel to the authority. This agreement is really the culmination and the final action that this board would see. The various agreements that were negotiated lead up to the ability to enter into this redevelopment agreement to pledge the increment. So this is the final step, if you will, in that process with those other bodies.
So we had never finalized the TIF arrangement publicly before in a URA meeting?
Not with the developer, no.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution URA 2023-01. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Madera?
Second.
Have a resolution and a second to adopt, have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution URA 2023-01. Is there any discussion? Seeing no request for discussion, will the, take a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we have Resolution URA 2023-05, Approving and Amending an IGA for Property Tax Increment Revenue with Metropolitan, with the Metropolitan District. Do any board members have any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion and a second to adopt Resolution URA 2023-05. Vice chair?
So moved.
Commissioner Madera?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution URA 2023-05. Is there any discussion? Seeing no requests for discussion, do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, we're gonna get a presentation on the marketing sales update for the Mile High Greyhound Park for Trax A&amp;B. I'll invite Bill Aiken, Director of Urban Renewal, to give the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the CCURA. As Chairman Hughesman said, we're gonna do a brief presentation, a couple slides on an update to the marketing sales efforts of the CCURA at Mile High Greyhound Park. Back in November of 2022, the CCURA authorized the marketing of the properties through a local broker, SRS Denver. Properties have been marketed starting in December, so December and January effectively were the marketing period for this property. There are two tracts of land, Track A, which is north of 63rd, and Track B, which is south of 63rd. Total about nine and a half acres of land still owned by the CCURA. And CCURA has received interest from multiple developers to purchase the land and partner on redevelopment activities within that part of the project. And staff is seeking direction on proceeding with selecting developers and negotiating agreements. Here's a recent aerial of those properties, just to show you where they are in context to the site. There's the hotel pad, which was sold on January 31st. The balance of land still owned by the CCURA, shown in red, is Track A at about four acres, and Track B at about five and a half acres. City, back in 2021, in partnership with the CCURA, hired a firm known as HOK that did a planning study. And this was the culmination of that study to show what the preferred site plan was, that's been part of the marketing packet for the marketing and sales of the land. It incorporates approximately a 60,000-square-foot multi-use institutional building, a public educational-type building, just a variety of public uses anticipated to be in that building. Balance of the land is roughly 40,000 square feet of retail, and then a hotel. Again, the hotel pad's been sold, and you'll start to see activity out there on February 20th as we mobilize to start land development for the hotel. And the rest of the discussion is what to do with the remaining land. So again, Pad A and Track B. Back when we approached the CCURA around October, we went over the uses and the land value parameters. As it was anticipated in the 2019 and 2020 purchase and sales agreements, and master development agreements with Dell West, is our development partner in this, that the CC, that the CCURA would approve uses and a purchase price for the land, and then we could move forward into negotiations and sales on that land. These were the parameters that were approved, anticipated that the cost would be somewhere in the million to $4 million range, depending on the types of uses and/or developers that would be interested in this land. So now that we've received three letters of interest that document a lot of what we needed to share at the CCURA to receive direction on negotiations, what we're asking for tonight is, at a later presentation, to go in, talk about those in more detail, and receive direction. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If they're directly related to negotiations or offers, we'd likely close the public session and move into executive.
Does anybody have any questions for staff at this time? Vice chair?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thanks for the presentation, Bill. But I just had a few concerns or questions on, when it mentions boutique wine and liquor, what does that mean?
So that would probably be a really good question for planning staff. That's part of a rezoning effort that occurred about a decade ago for the PUD rezoning, and that's a specific use that was approved by city council as a land use in there. So not necessarily for the URA. It's a land use decision that was made by the city.
So it could potentially be more like a liquor store, then?
If you could bring back up the presentation, have the slide of the allowed uses.
Yeah, see, it's at the bottom or under full service sit-down. See, it says, it's the line after bank daycare. Because I was just concerned, there's so many liquor stores in that surrounding area. Because there's, you know, King Super sells liquor, then Walmart sells liquor, then there's that liquor store in that park, Park Hill shop, not Park Hill, but the little shopping area across the street.
Right across the street, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so that's a concern of mine. There's so many liquor stores already right there.
What I would suggest for the purpose of this presentation is that since the CCURA is still the land owner, and we're not at any risk to selling it to someone at this time that would develop that, that certainly we could bring it back to the CCURA board to potentially restrict that, and/or take a look at the PUD zoning to potentially modify those, if the direction of the council or the URA has changed since those were originally approved.
Okay, okay, because, I mean, that's just how I feel, you know, at that area, if that, I don't know how the other board members feel, but there's also like at least five or six other liquor stores. Like, we got Dell's Liquor Mart right here on Quebec. 7-Eleven sells liquor, so that's something that's concerning. And also... sells liquor, so that's something, that's concerning, and also somewhere in there was the use of the, uh, cellphone stores, and they're all like within five blocks, at least four different cellular phone retailer shops as well, so that, I hope that's something you guys can think about as well.
Absolutely, we can certainly bring, um, bring it back as we get into negotiations with a, a selected developer, on which uses may or may not be appropriate.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation. This time, I'm looking for a motion in a second to enter a new executive session of the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, subparentheses A, to address the sale of real property, specifically Track A and B within the Mile High Greyhound Park, and also pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, subparentheses E, for the purpose of instructing negotiators with regard to the same. Commissioner Hurst?
So moved.
Commissioner Madera?
Second.
Have a motion in a second to enter an executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Vice Chair?
Yes, thank you, I'm just curious, is it, I don't know how everyone feels, but should all the members be present to discuss this, since we're missing two council members?
Commissioner.
Or commissioners, I mean.
Or them.
Yeah.
You have a quorum, I mean, it's not necessary to have more, you know, you have everybody you need here to go ahead and go into executive session and, and make the decisions that you need to make.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other discussion, do a voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. URA is going to go into executive session, uh, the meeting and broadcast will, recording will remain up, the executive session is estimated to last approximately twenty minutes, and, um, we'll come back in, after that.
All right, Mayor, we are good.
All right, the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority is out of its executive session. That concludes all the business that we have for the Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority. I'd like to thank all of our commissioners from the other boards who joined us this evening to have a lively discussion, and we'll see you next month. All right, let's go back to our city council study session, and we're going to have reports at this time, so, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for a general update, staff has updated our GoGov app to include parking concerns. We had received a number of requests from our community when wanting to report abandoned vehicles, vehicles parking too long, RVs parking within the right-of-way, that there wasn't an official location within our CRM in order for those complaints to be filed. So, we have taken action, and that has been updated as of this weekend for our community to be able to post those concerns. While speaking about our CRM system, I would like to also make our community aware that we are hoping a new system will be live the first week of April, which will obviously provide some of the similar tools that they find today, but will also be able to give them some more ability from mobile apps and other tagging and identifying of various concerns and complaints in real time that our current system does not provide. So, very interested to see that. With respect to economic development, we have a four-page ad in the 2023 Colorado Investment Guide. That is a published site selector magazine that is sent to national site selectors. It is our hope that this will give us great exposure to the broader site selector community for Commerce City, so we look forward to that. Public Works, we heard last Monday that there is a continuing concern about the snow and ice buildup within our right-of-ways that can potentially cause drainage concerns within our neighborhoods. Public Works, since that discussion last Monday, has entered into a contract. That contract began last Friday, which is a resource or a third-party vendor to help remove the accumulation of excess snow and ice from our right-of-ways. Operations are currently focused right now on the core city and will be expanding to the northern range. A lot of that post-storm cleanup activities and priorities have, you know, routinely been trying to address these various safety issues on our roadways, right? We're starting to see potholes, down missing signs. We have had some post-storm equipment maintenance and preparation. It feels as though that we're having a snowstorm every two weeks, but we're trying to stay ahead of it, and this hopefully third-party vendor will help us. We have that contract for over the period of a week to help remove a lot of these issues. And in that, I would say this to our community: If you have concerns or issues, if you see an area that may not have been treated or needs to be treated, please reach out to our Public Works main line so that they and their vendor can get out there to assess and take immediate action. I will share that, given we have an upcoming storm on Wednesday, we would pause these activities until such time we are in post-storm so that we can be tackling it and not, once again, necessarily addressing the issue because of, once again, you're fighting a storm as it's coming. Hundred-and-fourth concrete buckling has been, I'll say, a longstanding concern. We had about 25 panels that were in need of repair just due to various weather conditions or circumstances over the course of a two-year period. The panels were replaced over a five-month period. It is now completed, so the 25 panels between Highway 2 and Tower Road has been completed. We also have had numerous illegal dumping cleanups that have occurred over this past week. There's been, I'll call it, large dumping areas just within our Sand Creek industrial area. That's the area of 48th Ivy, 83rd Avenue east of Rosemary, 64th, 270, 100th, and Peoria in the main, and our staff is tackling that on a weekly basis. We had some other more innocuous locations within our core city as well that they are tackling. One of the things that, like, we've talked about with the MyC3, the hot-shot crew, that we are actively standing up, would be a great resource in addressing these issues. We've also repaired a number of various traffic signs that, due to the weather, have been missing that we've now replaced. That's been, I'll call it, throughout the entire day. We also continue to put up various traffic signs around Kemp Elementary. That's programmed to be completed over a four-to-five-week process, obviously for school safety, traffic zones, and things of that nature. Lastly, when it comes to signage, our staff is currently addressing a request for no parking to be replaced in and around Holly Park, so we are tackling that as well. Those signs had been removed, so we are taking the necessary efforts to put those signs back up. The signs were removed by an unknown party, so we are taking action. Lastly, for Parks, Wreck and Golf, we have Valentine's Day tomorrow, and we have reservations for dinner at Bison Grill, which are currently sitting at 80 with some limited availability left, so I would say, please contact... Mayor, do you have some news that you would like to share, since you're shaking your head now?
Yeah, I was put on a wait list.
Moving on.
Maybe you shouldn't have used your real name. What'd you say?
Maybe you shouldn't have used your real name.
Probably not.
Moving on. Sunday breakfast buffet will be returned, returned three weeks ago. It's been very popular. We've been averaging about 101 participants per day for that, like I said, Sunday breakfast buffet, so seeing some pretty good turnout for that. And then, lastly, we've gotten some feedback on our new menu, been very positive. Top shows have been the Caprese flatbread sandwich and the Greek beef stew. And with that, that concludes my report for the night.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Does anybody on council have any questions for Mr. Rogers concerning his report? I want to say thank you to the Bison Grill staff. They have been doing a great job of improving the menu as well as some of the events they've been doing, and I'm really glad to see the breakfast buffet on Sundays come back. We went there a couple weeks ago, and it was great and kind of felt like we were back to the way things we used to be. And the omelet station and the waffle station, it's all just phenomenal, so thanks for bringing that back. Yes, sir.
One last item for those that are listening. I think you, I think the community was aware that during the COVID pandemic, we had, I'll call it, we had suspended our Monday through Friday hours within our Civic Center and our MSC building, given that, once again, we've become, and we've come to learn how to live on, live with this new normal. As of last week, we have reopened the Civic Center and our MSC for Monday to Friday, eight to five, given that we started to see an uptick in our community coming out on Fridays, trying to get business done, different activities, so we wanted to respond in kind. So, for anybody who's out there listening, we are open Monday through Friday, eight to five, Civic Center, MSC. Look forward to seeing you.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Kim.
Just want to publicly say, great job to your staff regarding these, the day-after reports, the videos that they put posting out there. Travis, is it right? Travis, Travis has the face of Commerce City, essentially, when it comes to, you know, kind of providing a summary as to what occurred during the city council study session. I think a lot of the residents appreciate that as well. It's something that I know they've, they want to get involved, they don't know how, or they don't really want to take the time to review all millions of hours of stuff, so shout out to him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hader.
Nothing to report, just a couple of things to make you aware of. Coming soon, you'll see from at least some actions, some things you've recently requested, we'll have the fireworks ban that you actually, that you sought previously back in front of you within the next couple months, at least, as well as you'll be getting our presentation on marijuana regulation updates for your consideration, and I know that we will be able to revisit and include, you know, refresher on the zoning regulations and setbacks as well, in case those are issues you want to revisit. You're going to see some coming ordinances from Buildings, the Buildings Division, including those related to international codes, and I believe, then you'll, of course, see soon the policy changes or the policy recommendations that we went through earlier this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Does anybody on the council have any questions for Mr. Hader? Councilmember Noble? All right, seeing no questions, we'll move on. Do any council members wish to make a report? Councilmember Noble?
Thank you very much. Yes, I attended the senior commission meeting last Thursday. What a productive group, and they meet in person and rarely have an absence from any of the members. They're planning the senior, second senior resource fair for June, and in addition, they'll be doing outreach. One of the first outreach efforts will be at Eagle Point coming up the first week of March, so keep your eye out on that, for that as well. There will be a resolution coming before us as well to add activities to the purposes of the senior commission in order to make that resource fair actually a legal task on their part, so we'll be watching for that. I also attended the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District meeting on Thursday night, which was really a requirement that they have to do for the new Klein water facility. This is, of course, to address the PFAS issues. The long, in the short term, South Adams County Water has been getting a lot of water from Denver. Denver has no PFAS in its water, by the way, but it's a very high percentage, quite expensive. That is a short-term solution. They also have their own methods, their own treatment for PFAS in the water, but that too is quite expensive, so they want to go to a new treatment center, and that facility will be built out over a period of years, but it's around $62 million, and it is a long-term solution for the PFAS issue that we have been dealing with primarily because of the Denver Firefighting Academy and also the arsenal. So, it was quite an interesting meeting. I did stream it on my Facebook page, Councilmember Susan Noble, so if you weren't there, then you can look at it there as well as take a look at the, at the slides. And that, oh, and I also attended Rocky Mountain Partnership. We have a council member assigned to that who happens to be me. I took Councilmember Megan Grimes' seat. However, it's really an agency for leaders, staff leaders in Commerce City, so, I mean, in the region, so it's for city managers and so forth, not really for council members, so I have also suggested that it be removed from our, from our list, so, thank you very much.
Any other council members needing to make a report? All right, seeing none, the only thing I have to report is City Manager Rogers and I had a meeting with Crunkie Sports Entertainment last week. That's it. All right, let's go ahead and reconvene the special city council meeting, this time... I got to find the right executive session. There's so many here.
Should be at the very last page.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like for a motion to second to enter into executive session of the city council pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, parentheses for, subparentheses FNI, for the discussion of personnel matters specifically to conduct a formulary session to establish performance standards and the manner of performance evaluations of the city manager. Councilmember Hurst.
Sumo.
Councilmember Madera.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second to enter into executive session for the purposes stated. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I just had a question of what the deadline was on this.
Mr. Hader.
Pursuant to the employment contract that the city has entered into with the city manager, the formulary session is supposed to be concluded by the second Monday in February, which would be today. That being said, if you are unable to conclude it by that time, and you were to receive a notice from Mr. Rogers, you would have 60 days to cure that breach, if you would.
Okay, yeah, that's what I wanted to know, because we don't have all the council members here, and usually, when it comes to matters of employment, we like to make sure that everyone has a say in these matters, so...
I, I, I'm sorry to have interrupted you.
Yeah.
I say, the last meeting, it was on a schedule as well, so I would just encourage your colleagues to be here.
Mr. Rogers, do you have a comment that you would like to make at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I would appreciate being able to have all nine council present, available to be able to participate. I think it's important as a body to be able to hear all of your voices and, and obviously to hear my thoughts and feedback, and I think that's just out of a show of respect and a level of just course of action that I'd want to extend that to the full body of council.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that opinion, and just to clarify for a matter of the record, you are aware of the fact that we are supposed to have this done this evening, but you are still stating that you would prefer to have all nine members of the city council here to have this session?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is there any other discussion? All right, I have a vote, or a motion and a second to go into executive session for the purpose stated, to do a formulary session for the establish the performance standards and the manner of performance evaluations of the city manager. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion fails unanimously. Well, that doesn't happen often. All right, that's the last bit of business that we have to do for the evening, so we are adjourned. We'll see you all next week, no, we won't next week. Next week is President's Day, so we will not have a meeting. It won't be till the... It won't be till the 27th, and hopefully everybody is present so we can get this formulary session done. It is supposed to snow starting tomorrow night. If you haven't noticed, it was kind of warm today. That means the ground is pretty warm, so when that snow hits, it's going to turn to ice, or, excuse me, not ice, it's going to turn to water. And then, as it starts to cool down over the evening, it's going to actually turn into ice, and that's going to make the roads very slick. So, your commute on Wednesday morning is probably going to be treacherous. The city is most likely going to be on accident alert, and you should probably plan to leave well in advance of when you normally do in order to get to where you're supposed to get to. Have a good evening, have a good week, see you in two weeks.